Yeah, for the happy. Yeah, welcome. I know. Yeah. I agree. One, I feel like that it can get a lot, you know, do a lot more, have a better, more productive discussion.
For sure.
Yeah. It's good to see you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ralph Rush Center for the regular February meeting of the Boone County Board of Education. Tonight is a business meeting for the Board of Education. During this meeting, the Board will consider business items, provide recognition, and receive reports on our school district. At this meeting, my role as superintendent is to serve to, as an advisor to the school board. During the regular board meetings, the school board allows time for public, for the public, excuse me, to provide their input and comments on the items of business on the agenda so they may be considered before a decision is made. We value your feedback, and we ask that everyone listens and is respectful of each other and respectful of differing opinions. A time limit on public comments may be implemented for the sake of expediency if we have a large crowd, which it does not appear that we do this evening. Also, disruptive or disrespectful behavior is not appropriate and just cannot be tolerated as our board members and I both want a safe, orderly, and productive meeting. If you have questions or concerns regarding any items that are not on our agenda tonight, we have a form that is available to you. You could see our, let's see, Ms. Kim Best right back there. She's our Assistant Superintendent for Operations. She has that form. And you complete that form, turn that back into the, to the school board office, and a school official or a board member will personally follow up with you on that topic. The Chair of tonight's Board of Education, Ms. Julia Powell, will officially start our board meeting here in just a few moments. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
Good evening. I'd like to call a order the February 10th, 2022 Boone County Board of Education meeting. Make note that all board members are present. And I'd like to ask the, those present to please stand as we have a video from Gray Middle School with our National Anthem. Ready? And now we will have our pledge allegiance led by the, the students from Steeplechase Elementary. So we will go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll now move to item four on the agenda, IV, with a report from our student representative, Mrs. Elena McCowan.
Thank you. I always forget how short I am until I have to bring the microphone all the way over. All right. So we've gotten some really good work done this past month. We've made progress on logo development, which I believe I discussed last meeting. We currently have two working prototypes that were created by Hang Yang, who is actually here tonight. Um, thank you so much for coming, and he's been a great help throughout the process. We were, we also have Patrick Pridemore here as well. So again, thank you guys both for coming tonight and being here to represent your schools in the SSAC. We have gotten some student feedback on both of those prototypes, and we are hoping to next move into our Phase Two of this process, which is just to get some student feedback, some feedback from friends and associates in the design programs within our school district, just to get it cleaned up a little bit before we finally move on to working with some of the students in our district on creating that logo and finalizing it. We also spoke a little bit about the Portrait of a Graduate Meeting, which took place this first Tuesday, February 2nd. We were able to have some great discussions about it and about what the students felt was important for them to have as they graduate. And I was able to get some of their most important things that they wanted out of their graduation. A lot of students said they wanted to really learn more about the diverse backgrounds that their students have. They really wanted to be able to communicate better with their peers. And they said that leadership and having passion for what they do and learning how to keep that passion and utilize it was very important to them. So I know I'll also be bringing that to our next Portrait of a Graduate Meeting, as well as hopefully encouraging more students to be there. Finally, we begun to speak about student elections and the process of electing the next student board representative. And we are talking about the process of the delegate assembly. So I know I'm very, very excited about that. Very excited to see who will be my predecessor, predecessor. That's the wrong word, I apologize. Who will be the one who succeeds me. And I'm very hopeful. We've got some great candidates, and I'm very, very excited to see how our students rise up to come together to find the best representative for our body. So. Yeah, I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for listening, and I hope everyone is having a great evening tonight.
Thank you, Elena. Great job. I really appreciate your, your passion for the work and your enthusiasm and all that you're doing with the advisory council. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work. The next good news item that we have is February's Break the Mold Award. The Break the Mold Award winner for February is Transportation Coordinator for District Two, Lisa Woodard. Lisa's nominator, Ms. Erica Bowles, Principal at Bally Shannon Middle School, says Lisa has an exemplary work ethic and is consistently focused on impeccable performance. We'd like you to meet Lisa Woodard in this video and see exactly what is the job of a transportation coordinator and all that they do.
School bus transportation has been crippled nationwide with the loss of bus drivers for myriad reasons, including COVID illnesses. The Boone County School District has not been spared.
Currently, I have six vacant routes. District Two never has vacant routes. I have six, I think we have 20 total vacant routes right now. And we, we have no sub-drivers, no itinerant drivers, very few part-time drivers. So we start out the day automatically having to cover 20 routes that does not have a permanent driver assigned to them. And then on top of that, we'll get the absences that come in overnight.
Meet Lisa Woodard. She is Boone County Schools District Two Dispatch Supervisor. She has the largest district of four and controls the whereabouts of more than 60 buses daily. Knowing how her typical day starts should give us renewed respect for everyone working in school bus transportation.
It would be arriving here around 5:00, before a lot of people are out of bed. And we all kind of, we make, we work together getting all of our routes covered. You know, swapping drivers, however we got to do it to figure it out, doubling routes, because that's what it has turned into. And by 6:00, we kind of know where everybody's going, who's left in the office. There are days that I'm left here. And there, we have literally cleared the office, everybody out driving.
That means all hands on deck. Everyone is driving that has a CDL, including office workers. Lisa stays behind to communicate with principals and parents about the potential their student or child will be part of a double or triple run today because we don't have enough drivers. It's become the unfortunate new normal.
As soon as we know that a double run is happening, we are contacting parents. I put information on our screens that are all around the building so the kids see what their double runs are for the day. Customer service-wise, she allows us to give the kids and the parents what they need. But on the other hand, she's doing it too. She's interacting with our parents just as much as we are, and never, never an unkind word.
She finds routes that come back quickly so we don't have kids left at school for long amounts of time. And she's just, I don't know anybody more flexible or handles stress the way that she does. I couldn't ask for a better person to work with in the Transportation Department.
Administrators and bus drivers who work with her notice that even under tremendous daily pressure, Lisa Woodard's work ethic never wavers.
We learn from her. She's a great example and a great role model to what a supervisor actually is. She treats everybody equal and fairly, and she's always willing to listen to what you have to say.
She does what she can with the limited things she's got to do it with. And I commend her on that 100%. I couldn't do it.
What I like the best about working, I'm gonna say with Lisa, is because that's how it is. You work with her. She doesn't make you feel like you're working for her as a supervisor.
We're running very efficiently. She has gone in and consolidated routes, changed routes. If we have an individual that doesn't show up at the last minute, she knows which route is best to double. Make all those, I'll call them audibles. We, it sounds like a football team, but it's audibles at the last minute. And, and, and it runs pretty seamlessly.
The last two years have been difficult, but I've, I was raised to always be up for a challenge. And it's been a challenge, and it's just made me work that much harder to try to figure out what to do, how to go about doing it, to make it the easiest and the best for the students, the schools, the parents.
Lisa won't leave her work at the desk, even when the boss tells her to do so.
She'll dispatch her kitchen table by letter.
Uh, could you tell me who the Country Place Bus is today, please?
The radio follows me around just like my phone does. Um, I even take it home if I go home in the afternoon where I'm not sitting here at my desk. I dispatch from home. But I love chaos.
When I think of somebody for Break the Mold, I think, you blow me away. Like, I aspire to be like you, to have the qualities that you have in your work.
I'm a little overwhelmed with it. It's like, I just do my job. I just feel like I'm just doing what I'm here to do, what Boone County Schools pays me to do, my job.
Congratulations, Lisa. Um, I think it's awesome. You finally have gotten what you deserve, and I hope you relish in your moment.
Congratulations, Lisa, on winning the Break the Mold. And you do a phenomenal job. How you do it, I don't know, but congratulations.
Hey, Lisa. It's your crazy person on the other side of the wall. I just wanted to say what a pleasure it is to have the privilege to come in here and work with you. Thank you for choosing me four years ago to do something new in my career for Boone County Schools. You have been such a pleasure to work with and a blessing to me and thousands of other people. Keep up the good work, and just always remember that you are the light of this building, and we appreciate you. And thank you for always stepping up to the plate and being positive and keeping us going. And you are much appreciated. And congratulations. Keep it up. Love, girl.
Lisa, from, from my office and the entire staff at Connor Middle School, we love and appreciate you, and congratulations on Break the Mold. Can't think of anybody better that deserves it.
Lisa, Break the Mold winner, congratulations. Well deserved. We're all so proud of you and just so proud of the work you do for our district and our children every day. Thank you for being here a part of our organization, and thank you for helping make Boone County the success that it is. Congratulations, Lisa.
Lisa, I think the world of you, and I think that you are spectacular at your job. And I'm so thankful every day that you coordinate all of our transportation. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for investing in Boone County. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lisa. Well done.
Just thank you. I'm just really overwhelmed by all the things.
Well, I know.
You came on such a surprise. I mean, you know.
Appreciate all you do and everything. Do you have something else coming up?
This is from us.
Thank you again to our transportation staff. Our next news, good news item is I'm very pleased to introduce Eric Ball. Here to my left here, Eric, if you would, please stand up just for a moment. Eric Ball is our new Director of Human Resources. He has served as the Assistant Director of Human Resources for, I believe, four and a half years, and previously worked as an administrator at Collins Elementary School. We're very pleased to have Eric joining our cabinet and, and serving in this role. So please welcome Eric Ball. And last but not least, we have a birthday in the room. Dr. Jim Detwiler, our Deputy Superintendent for Learning Support. He is, I believe, turning 39 this evening. We don't believe 28, Jim. No, no. Happy birthday, Dr. Detwiler. And Madam Chair, that's all of my good news items. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Turner. I would like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda under New Business, which is a change to the district calendar. Do I have a first? So moved. Dr. Brown, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Byrd? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Agenda Item VI, Audience Assistance. The Board welcomes the opportunity here from the community and inform the Board of your views on matters before the Board. Please keep in mind, the Board of Agenda Item is set by statute, and the Board can only discuss the items that are present on the agenda. The Board cannot legally, nor would the Board discuss, an issue specific to an employee or student in respect to privacy. Please, this is a reminder that the meetings are streamed live to YouTube, and please be respectful in your comments. We do have quite a few public, and I do know students do watch this. If you have a concern that you would like a response from the administration, feel free to leave your information as directed. Please try to keep comments to two minutes so that all who wish to speak may speak. So we have three individuals who have requested tonight. Mike Griffin, then Hang Chang, Hang Yang, and Heather, is it Ling Gali?
Iainelli.
Okay.
Iainelli.
My name is Mike Griffin. I work in transportation. And what I'd like to discuss a little bit is communication between you board members and the employees, your rank and file. I'm gonna tell you a little story. Years ago, I worked for a very large, major worldwide corporation. And while I was working there, it's based in my home state, the CEO every three or four months would actually come down out of his 20th floor penthouse office and come down to the floor and talk to the employees, the guys working on the lines in the manufacturing. And he'd walk around, and he'd say, how you doing? You know, how's everything going down here? You got any concerns or problems? And if he did, he would stop and say, okay, hit me with it. And when he got through telling them, he's staring you in the eyes to see where you're coming from. He would shake his head and say, okay, thank you, and have a great day, and move on. Well, he understood that communication between his staff and himself and his employees was very important. And right now, from what I'm seeing, the communication is poor at best here between the Board and the employees. And I told you that story because I wanted you to understand what he understood, that it's important. We've had, he didn't want a staff member telling him what, what was going on or any surveys like we have going on now. No offense to whoever put the survey out, but we've had surveys here in the past. And nothing's come from them surveys. So a lot of people have chosen not to fill out the survey this time because of that. We have a communication breakdown somewhere here. And what happens with a communication breakdown is rumors start. And eventually, a rumor's gonna get out, and it's gonna brush somebody the wrong way, and you're gonna end up with a hostile workplace. And I don't want to see that happen here. I don't want to see it happen. We got too many great people working here. Lately, some of the emails that came down from the Board have been very vague. And when we go for clarification and ask for clarification, we get, I don't know what to tell you. So I know some people have actually sent emails and never got a response. Or when they do get a response to something, it's four or five weeks later, and the response is just as vague as the original email. We need to fix this. I understand you guys make policies. I understand you guys make the procedures. But wouldn't it be a good idea, instead of blindsiding us and implementing these procedures and policies before putting it out there and saying, hey, this is what we kind of want to do, and get some input from the people that actually do the job? This gentleman, that CEO who used to come down and see the employees. I'm gonna put a challenge out to you. How about some of you board members come on out to the bus lot or the maintenance building and just walk around, introduce yourself, and, and talk to the workers, ask them questions. You may not like some of the answers, but at least you're gonna get the truth, and it's not gonna be it's not going to be sugar-coated. You know, it's a challenge. I mean, this is, it's getting bad where people are thinking about leaving. And that's no way to run things. That's no way to run things. And I said introduce yourself for one reason. This morning, I got in a conversation with a few other drivers, and Mr. Turner, your name came up, and they says, "Well, who's he here?" And I says, "Well, he's our superintendent." He goes, "Oh, yeah, 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 yeah." He says, "Do you know that in a two-person lineup, I could not pick him out?" And that's why I put that in there, saying introduce yourselves. Every year, Transportation has an eight-hour update. It'd be nice if some of you guys could show up and introduce yourselves. "Hi, I'm so-and-so with the Board. Glad to see everybody here today." And that would go a long way with us. Right now, we just feel blindsided. And all we want is a little bit of respect and knowing what's going on before you implement it. Thank you for your time. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr., thank you very much, Mr. Griffin. We appreciate the comments. Next up is Hang Yang.
Hi, my name's Hang Yang. I'm a representative of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council on behalf of Connor High School. I am bringing up a concern brought to my attention by many of my peers, the suggestion that Boone County schools should be off on the Monday after the Super Bowl, February 14th, to witness the historical moment that the Cincinnati Bengals play in the Super Bowl, like Cincinnati's public school system. Some may ask how football is enough to cancel school. I would like to remind the audience that the Bengals are doing well for the first time in three decades to be in the Super Bowl. This is a historical moment to the community as part of Cincinnati suburb. What I do understand, the Super Bowl is on a Sunday. The game usually lasts around 11:00 p.m. at night, drastically increasing the risk of students missing attendance on Monday because they are too sleepy to wake up for school. Not only are the students skipping classes, but teachers are also annoyed that a sizable portion of the class is absent for instruction, so they often postpone their lesson plan or teach anyway, and waste valuable classroom time catching up students who miss instead of pressing forward with content. This is especially unfair to students like me, being best in my high school class for multiple years and have no interest in sports, to have to waste valuable class period. Therefore, the most just thing between teachers and students is to cancel school. One concern that was brought up between the Advisory Council meeting is that the students living near the poverty line might starve during the unexpected day off because they rely on the schools for meals. As President of the Go Pantry Ambassador Council, a youth organization dedicated to promoting awareness of childhood food insecurity, I fully understand the idea of nutritional needs and propose an effective solution to mitigate hunger. If school districts can call off school within the next 24 hours, schools can organize extra meal kits to supplement kids' breaks. That way, no one will go hungry, unlike the unexpected snow days during this necessary break. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yang, and especially thank you for sharing your student voice. We appreciate that. Next is Heather.
Ayenelli.
Thank you.
That kid's a born leader right there. Good job. So my name's Dr. Heather Ayenelli. I'm a mom of three girls, and I've been a chiropractor in Canton County for over 20 years with a focus on pediatric and prenatal care. I'm here because I have friends and loved ones, and my kids have friends and loved ones in this county, and I want to fight for their right to breathe. My oldest daughter is also considering being a teacher, so it's important to me. She may end up in this county, I don't know. So I've heard you're going to go mask optional next week, but why not now? Is a few more days really going to make that big of a difference? And they're not even going to be here Saturday and Sunday, maybe even Monday? So I also want to make sure it stays that way. We're really tired of our kids having this over their faces. Mostly, I'm here to kind of educate you a little bit, because a lot of people don't know this. Actually, I've even had to educate a medical doctor on some of this recently. I'm not saying that arrogantly. They literally came and asked me. So as an undergrad, I worked in a molecular virology laboratory at Indiana State Department of Health and at Purdue University for three years. We were looking at PCR testing to diagnose influenza. We determined in short it did not work well. So I have an understanding considering viruses, their molecular structures, and PCR technology. So PCR is a laboratory technique that most people use for testing that rapidly duplicates the segment of RNA or DNA, nothing more. It was never meant and should never be used as a diagnostic test. It's like looking at a person in a house, but only looking for them by finding a piece of hair. The hair doesn't mean the person is there or has ever been there. So the PCR tests are done with grossly inappropriate cycle threshold levels. That reality was published last April, or two Aprils ago, 2020, about this virus, which I knew about influenza back in the 90s. So a study in April 2020, the PCR test may be used if we do the test on day three or four symptoms, and if we run 17 to 23 cycles. If we run 33 cycles or more, there's a 97% chance that it'll be false positive. We are running tests 35 to 45 cycles. I know in Canton County, in the school district, they were running it 37 cycles. If you don't understand what I'm talking about, please know that I am willing to meet with you. We can have coffee or lunch or whatever on me, and I'd be happy to explain this, you know, with more time. Now masking, I really wish they worked, or I wouldn't be here. But in my opinion, it's equivalent to child abuse. So even Fauci has admitted there's no evidence that masks prevent transmission, and there's no substantial evidence that they are medically, or there is substantial evidence they are medically, psychologically, and physiologically damaging, causing hypercapnia, allergic reactions, conjunctivitis, anxiety, panic attacks, and teen suicides up 500%, just to name a few. So I have tons of studies showing the dangers of what I just explained, and the dangers of the children. So our legislator made it possible to give these choices back to the parents way back last year, months ago. I know for us parents, if I want my child to wear a mask, or get a shot, or paint her nails purple, that's my right, and that right doesn't belong to anyone, not even my parents, who I love and I know love my children. And I know you wouldn't want me arbitrarily making rules on your children as well, or your grandchildren. So a few more things for the flu in the U.S. According to the CDC, in the 2021 flu season, there were 1,627 cases. That's down from 25 to 50 million. Now, the CDC credits masking and social distancing for that miraculous reduction, despite the fact that the flu virus is slightly smaller than the coronavirus. So we're all smarter than that. So let's talk about case rates real quick. In Kentucky, a moderate threat is if you have two cases per 100,000 people. I don't know if everybody here knew that. So you're considered a yellow state if you have two cases. Orange if you have 11, and red if you have 25, per 100,000 people. So that's a .025%. It's minuscule. So we're locking down and freaking people out and coloring our county's red for really nothing, using a false PCR test. So even the CDC says for the schools that if the case rate is under 200 per 100,000 people in a county, then masks should not be required. They are recommended and optional. Boone County, right now, at least the last time I checked, was 107. So we're under that level. And there's been very few times that we've been over 200, like, literally like three weeks worth. But we covered everyone's mouth and shut schools and businesses, and none of it worked anyway. So real quick about the shots, I just want to let parents know that because of SB 8 and KRS 214.036, which is state law, Kentucky cannot mandate this vaccine or any vaccine for our children. So just wanted to let all parents know that. One thing I know for sure is the amazing power of the immune system that the Lord God has given me and my children, and I will always trust that over a piece of cloth. So again, I'd like to invite any of you, if you'd like to get ahold of me, I'm happy to talk to you individually when we have more time. One last thing, I do want to pray for you. Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us during these times, and please help this Board and the people in this room to open their eyes to their mind and to the truth. Lord, keep the love of power and money and the sense of fear at bay, and bestow on them wisdom as they make these decisions. Keep them, help them to keep our kids first, as they are our future. I pray this in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you for your time.
Okay, well, we will now move to Agenda Item VII, Recommended Action Consent Items A through O. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the Board to approve the Recommended Action Consent Agenda Items A through O, as presented with the Treasurers Report given by Mrs. Linda Shield.
We began the month with an adjusted cash balance of $79,418,000. And we received $11,460,584 in revenues. Our expenditures were $12,610,211. That was a net decrease in cash for the month of $1,149,627. Our balance at the end of the month is $78,268,891. Some of the highlights for the month. We received 5.4 million in property taxes, of which 1.3 million was restricted for building fund. That represents 97% of budgeted revenues from that source. We received 1.1 million in payments in lieu of taxes. Those revenues are restricted for new building openings, and the SIC revenues are showing that they've fallen behind last year's levels, and the reduction is about 4.1 million. Our debt service payments for the month were 2.9 million. And I've also, I've provided some various schedules, and the schedule on the ESSER grants, there is an additional attachment that gives some notes on how that spending is progressing on those grants. I can, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Shield? Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through O as recommended? Mrs. Byrd, do I have a second? Dr. Brown? Do we have any discussions on items on the consent agenda? Be noted discussion. We will move forward with a vote. All in favor to for the Consent Agenda Items A through O? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move the meeting to Agenda Item VII, Recommended Action Old Business. Seeing there's no old business on the agenda, we will move to Item XI, which is New Business. We will move to Agenda Item IX, which is XI, Recommend Action New Business Items. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the Board to approve the Recommended Action New Business Item A, the allocation formula for the 2022-2023 school year, as presented, and I have some additional comments once we move forward.
Do I have a motion to approve the New Business Item A through the allocation formula for the 2022-23 school year? Dr. Brown, do I have a second? Mr. Collins? Any discussion? Or did you have anything you want to share? Okay, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, thank you. Just a few comments before the Board considers and votes on this. Just some information for the public and others that may be watching. Each year, the School Board approves the allocation formula for the number of staff in each of our schools. By March 1st of each year, the Superintendent must then provide tentative allocations to our schools, so the Principal and the School Based Decision-Making Council, or SBDM Council, can begin their needs assessments and planning for the staffing and scheduling for classes for the next year. The final allocations are provided to schools on May 1st. The formula recommended tonight considers the most reliable projection of student enrollment, and is the same formula that our district has approved and implemented in the last previous years. I recommend that the Board approve the current formula as presented. I ask that you also consider that we're in the midst of our strategic planning process, which will provide direction and emphasis to some future staffing matters. And lastly, any changes to the formula would also need to be fully vetted and undergo possibly an actuarial analysis to determine any long-term implications of a change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Do we have any discussion on this item?
We've had some conversations about this in the past, and is there, I know most of this allocation formula was before you became the Superintendent and I was elected to this Board. The state of Kentucky says that we should have 31 to 1 in high school. Our allocation formula puts class size at 22 to 1, which is fantastic, low class size. But the state also says that it's okay to have 29 5th graders in a room, but we're not that liberal when it comes to 5th grade. We actually are keeping it at the 29. We have talked about our commitment to early childhood education in Boone County. I'm wondering why, and if anybody thinks it's a reasonable thing that we have very high class size, or at least the max, in elementary school, 28 to 1 in 4th grade, 29 to 1 teacher in 5th and 6th, which would be middle school, 6th grade. But 22 to 1, and an additional 3.5 in high school. It seems like to me that in order to provide and to show our commitment to early childhood education, that this district should show that commitment by allowing a smaller class size to be had in the most important years of a child's development, the young years. 24 to 1 for the primary grades, but 22 to 1 for high school, plus 3.5. 28 to 1 for 4th grade, 29 to 1 for 5th and 6th grade. Those are pretty large class sizes for the most important years of a child's life, going into the middle school years and then into the high school. It is no secret in this county and on this Board where my opinions lie with this, that resources need to be devoted to the most important years of a child's life, the early I tried repeatedly, just so people know, to have this conversation. We did have the conversation. There was some small conversation of maybe discussing this further, but data and information has been hard to get. And here we are with the same allocation formula that we have had for the last few years in Boone County, allowing a 29 to 1 for 5th grade, one of the most important years in an elementary school, students' time going into the middle school. Do we, and I've also been told that sometimes I come off a little brash, so I apologize for that, but that's my commitment to early childhood education coming across. I know that the strategic plan might be able to address some of this, but until then, the parents that spoke earlier about their children. But until then, the parents that spoke earlier about their children probably care just as much as I do about a class of twenty-nine fifth graders to one teacher. The high schools are twenty-two to one. We know that some classes don't have twenty-two students in them because they are at a variety of different programs. When will we show our commitment to early childhood education? By lowering the class size under the state cap for basically all the primary years. Is there, do we have a plan for that, Mr. Turner? Are we not interested in that as a Board?
Mr. Parks, as we met last week and discussed this topic for about two hours, I think I shared with you at that meeting my opinion on early childhood, childhood education and the importance of that. And also mentioned that we also have our strategic plan coming forward, and we need to make sure that all those items that we think are important for our kids, we make very clear in those meetings. And that will come out of this. And I am certain that there will be some emphasis on early childhood education within that. But we have to make sure that we listen to our community over these next two months when we're going through these processes and gathering information for what we want for the hopes, the dreams, the aspirations we have for our kids. I would also correct you that you have to be careful not to mix what class maximums are by law and also what ratios are for staffing buildings. Staffing a high school is a very different thing than staffing an elementary school or staffing a middle school by the structure of their schedules. And so those ratios of what you're just talking about does not indicate all the class sizes in those buildings. What it means is the amount of staff that's given for the number of students that are expected to attend that school. For example, in an elementary school, students are going to be paired with, with one main primary teacher, and they may be moving and having some other teachers that do some work with them during the day. In a traditional middle school, there are what they call specials, where they'll move about and have health and PE. They'll have fine arts. They'll have other areas that they will flow into. At high schools, even more diverse is the offerings that are there for students. So we have students that may study career and technical education pathways. We may have students that study world language. We may have students that study home economics, or I should say, family consumer services. So there's multiple options there. So what this formula does is provides the administration of this district to meet those needs. And looking at those individual class size numbers, we don't have tiny classes in one school level and large classes in others. We have a mixture of that all across our whole district, depending on some of our, our school situations. And then what we do is staff, provide staff to those schools that they can use through their SBDM Council and assign to areas that they see fit and see important for their school. So I, I hear and I agree with your comment about early childhood education. We did have some serious conversations about that. But I think my request to the Board would be to let me do my job and get in the middle of this to make sure we have proper allocations for our schools. And I can guarantee you I'll do that, and I'll answer questions as, as much as you have within that process.
Mr. Parks, I just want to highlight something. It's kind of ironic that before this meeting, I was actually at Cooper High School's intro for freshmen. And I think the emphasis of cap versus ratio is very important. I have three children that, I have two in high school right now. And I can assure you, in their core classes of English and math and social studies, there are far more than twenty-two students in a classroom. I think one of the things that I look at when my kids go to Cooper and we look at the schedules is the vast majority of things that are available to these students. And I guess one of the questions that will come, if we have this conversation down the road, is what do you get rid of? What do you get rid of? I mean, they have languages. They have CTE opportunities for kids, agriculture, agribusiness. There are so many options for our kids. So while I agree with you that early education is indeed a priority, we can't just give up on our high school kids either. These are kids that are preparing for scholarship opportunities that may allow them into the first generation of a college student. These are things that will change their life forever, and I think we have to be very, very cautious when we just kind of throw around, let's just get rid of caps here and move things there. I think if we all realize if we could have a one-to-one ratio, how amazing would that be? But I think the other thing I'll point out with the early childhood push as well is where do we put these kids? I can lower my class caps. Where am I going to put that classroom of twenty-one children? It won't be at the school my kids go to. There's no room for them. So I think there are so many factors that will take, take point in this. So while I agree with you, we need to emphasize where we put our resources. I think the community conversations will drive us to what types of things does our community look for? What are employers looking for across the spectrum from birth to graduation? And how can we help these kids the whole time? So I think, I'm hopeful that you'll see all of the awesome things that are going on at high school level when they get there. As a college professor, the stuff these kids are covering amazes me. The things my daughter's learning in AP classes astound me. They're things we didn't even see until college when I was a student. It, I mean, it's amazing. So I'm just going to put my little horn in for the cool stuff that our high schools are doing. I might be a little biased because I have two kids in high school, but, so, thank you.
I would just echo part of Dr. Brown's statement there, as that's been one of our hindrances for years, is we've had discussions of being able to lower those class sizes for years. But we are limited by the number of facilities that we have and the space at those facilities. And the dollars available to add on, because everyone knows in Boone County, you build an elementary school within a year or two, you're adding on to it. Because the state limits us as to the size that we can build elementary schools. And back in the mid nineties to early two thousands, we were growing anywhere from seven hundred to twelve hundred kids a year. We grew more in Boone County than most districts in the state had in their whole district. So you have to get creative, and you have to have those horrible mobile classrooms that no one wants. And we prefer the, the kids be all together in the bricks and mortar buildings. But I would agree that our Facilities Committee is going to have to do some work to see. I mean, historically, we've been one to two elementary schools behind for as long as I can remember. And the ability to be able to construct them, and as the costs continue to rise to do this construction projects, I would hate to see how much more the next elementary is going to cost compared to what we just opened Steeplechase at. So no one disagrees with that. Everyone knows my dream. I want preschool or pre, or PK standalone facilities across this district, at least five, just so you can have that early childhood emphasis that's going to be so critical. You may think I'm crazy for dreaming that, but some of the things that we dreamed about ten years ago, we're doing them now and have been for years. So if you don't dream, you can't achieve anything. So it's, I don't think it's a lack of, of care or knowing that it's important, because we do. The research is clear. Those of us who have raised our children, grandchildren now. My four-year-old's amazing. My four-year-old granddaughter is amazing. With her reasoning and cognitive ability that I know I didn't have when I was four. But so I'm, I'm not sure who's on the Facilities Committee this year. But I think that needs to be part of that committee's work soon to figure out that as part of this next strategic plan on what type of a commitment are we looking at and how do we make it happen? But those things don't happen overnight, and I would hate to see the district go backwards in what we're doing in our high schools to try to put a Band-Aid and fix something short-term that we can maybe look at creative ways to do things. But I agree with Dr. Brown. If you can figure out where to put the students to get those class sizes down, then I say put the plan before the Board.
Mrs. Bird, in response to one thing you just mentioned there, while our Facilities Committee is going to be meeting here within this spring and moving into the summer, we have met with Dr. Best, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Operations, along with other leaders here within our school district, including Mr. Ford, our Director of Pupil Personnel, looking at trends and projections for student numbers, and also looking at some of the trends and the, the items and areas out in the community where we may be looking for schools and looking for different possibilities. So there is some significant talk going on, on that very topic. I just wanted to bring you up to date with that.
And just for reference, on our Facilities Committee is Mr. Parks and Dr. Brown.
I, I just, I want, I do want to clarify a couple of things. My, my intention here is not to, I mean, some of the, some of my actual neighbors teach really wonderful high school programs. I'm a fan of the programs. Most of you that know me know that I know that a lot of the things in the district boil down to, you know, basically dollars. When we played the clip of Lisa scheduling her drivers with so many drivers not here. I think a couple of weeks, couple of months ago, we played some clips of a Break the Mold Award winner that ran a, was a educator in a preschool. And we have unfilled positions around the county that need to be addressed, which your, the committee, the Salary Committee is working on. When we have our state legislators unwilling to raise the SEEK funding for districts of our size currently, but they are willing to fund early childhood programs. We, we've just dealt with some of that when they went to all-day, full-day kindergarten without much direction or help for a county of our size. And we, that caused us some internal issues as far as scheduling that and even cost some issues for the drivers and so forth and routes. I think I look at this mostly as if we are at eighty-seven percent compensation for personnel, and we know we have to compensate even more personnel, and maybe in different ways or in different programs, it's not necessarily that any, anything needs to be lost. It's that it needs to be realigned or redirected, so we work smarter with the taxpayers' dollars. We can't continually add. We want a preschool. We know we don't have any more money for the preschool. Preschool's not even funded by the state as it sits now. So we have to be cognizant of what might have been prior to Mr. Turner's time here. And we might need to align with some of the other local districts and what they do as far as the allocations go. So we can afford the programs that we choose to afford or not. So it's definitely not out of me not understanding the great things that we do in high schools. I, in my area, not taking anything away from the other high schools, but I'm partial to Ryle. I live in that area, and some of those people are my neighbors, so I don't want to say anything negative about anybody. But great high school, you know, and everybody knows here, I'm a huge fan of Ignite and what they do over there. I went to Washington DC and talked to our representative about Ignite, because he's an engineer also. So I'm, I'm, I'm a fan of the high schools. My only thing is it's dollars and cents. And if we know that Kenton, for example, is at twenty-five to one, and some of the other districts, I've called a lot of them, some of them are envious of our allocation structure because they wish they could do that. All I'm saying is we need to take an in-depth look at where our expenses lay, and we know that there's not much we can do with fixed expenses. We, if we want, as I do, a preschool, if we want to focus our efforts on educating kids that speak many different languages when they enter the preschool, we need those staff members. If we want to have any opportunity to fill the bus driver positions, these things all cost money. If we want to build a school and staff it, then we need to figure out some of this difficult math. And I'm not advocating anyone go anywhere, or I think that's been kind of said about what I'm saying is to, you know, have some thing like that. But all I am, all I am merely pointing out is that the high school, thirty-one to one is the state requirement. Twenty-two to one is where we're at. Twenty-five to one is where Kenton's at. Most of the other districts are that or higher, and we're at the state max for elementary. And I would, and I'm not saying we're going to do it tonight. It doesn't sound like there's much support for that, which is, is fine for today. But we know, a wise person once told me last week that for every dollar, we get seven dollars in return. That person was Ms. Powell, for elementary school spending. It's one of the smartest investments a district can do. And when you look at it through that lens, I think that it's important for us as a Board to be able to, one, get the data, the real, actual data as far as what the allocations are in real time, and make sure, because I've been to the KSBA conferences, and they tell me that that is part of my responsibility is to know that we're following them or not, and to watch the budget, which is the only reason I'm even on this Board. It's my only expertise, really. I'm not an educator. I'm a person that can read these statements that are prepared for us every month. And I'm just telling you that if we want to accomplish any of these large goals, we have to find the money. We can't keep going back to the taxpayers and saying, give us more money. Because there doesn't seem to be the appetite in Frankfurt for basically almost anything when it comes to public education these days, except for early childhood. And I think we should get ahead of that and satisfy the legislative desires to have that strengthened. That's been obvious to me in this last session, that that's where their movement is and momentum. And I think we should get ahead of that as a district and embrace that change, because I think we will have better outcomes on the other end. We might have less kids go through the alternative schools if we have a better elementary system. And I understand the capacity issues at some schools. Some schools don't have that particular issue. So I just wanted to, I want to clarify one more time, not again, not opposed to anything the high schools are doing. We have the best high schools in the state of Kentucky. There is no doubt about that. We also, right now, currently have the best elementary school. If you've been to Collins or Kelly Elementary, some of these places are like magical, wonderful. I mean, the things the teachers are doing are incredible. You know, they've got little kids building tiny robots in one of the schools. I mean, it's fascinating. You know, they do some, they're like the most wonderful people in the world in these schools, all of them. And so all I'm merely pointing out is that we're at far under, I think, almost a large percentage under the state cap for high school. We're at the state max for primary, fourth, fifth, and sixth. And I think we should do some work to realign that a little bit and capitalize on the investment scenario that Ms. Powell described, and try to get a better bang for our dollars, and also accomplish the goals of Ms. Bird to have some preschool, a larger preschool presence in Kentucky. I think that's how we drive people to stay here in Boone County, is a successful preschool program. I know most of you that have children, you go to preschool, it's two hundred and something dollars a week right now for a kid. It's anywhere from one seventy, two hundred fifty dollars, depending on the quality of the program that you want. Well, I know how to do that cheaper in Boone County through the public education system. I can show you mathematically how to do it. So all I'm saying is I hope that the Board, over the next few months or year after the, the this exciting...I went to the Portrait of a Graduate. That was some of the best conversation in that room that I've been a part of with those parents, business leaders, community leaders. That was an impressive conversation that happened that night. There's a couple more. I encourage everyone to go to them. Mr. Turner's doing a wonderful job putting that together and his staff, because that's really what it's all about, and is the community engagement, making sure these schools, because these schools belong to you and, you know, us. And I just want to make sure that we all have a similar goal, which is to do this effectively, efficiently, and maximize the investment of the taxpayer, and continue to have the best elementary, middle, and high schools in the state of Kentucky as we do today. So with that, I'll get off the soapbox.
So I'm going to add some things on here. Mr. Parks, you mentioned about one of the priorities of the legislators is the early childhood education. Another priority of the legislatures, which they...this hopefully passes and holds in the Senate, is CTE education. They're looking...we're looking at potential, a large amount of money for CTE coming to our district. Yes. So there's quite a bit of work in that. Some other things I'm going to mention, not just realigning within our district, but we need to be outside of our silos, looking for partnerships to be able to accomplish some of the things we want to accomplish, because we can't do it all on our own. So it's partnering with organizations, finding funds. We don't tap into our community and business community with funds and partnerships and grants, pursuing grants, that there is money out there to accomplish a lot of what we need to accomplish, but we need to get outside of ourselves and partner with the community and tap into our alumni. We have a lot of alumni with a lot of expertise that a lot of what we're all agreeing that we want to accomplish, we need to pull the community in, which these partnerships, our strategic plan, our Portrait of the Graduate, is getting those conversations started and getting the buy-in and building this Boone County Schools as our community schools, not the board schools. It's everybody's schools, and we have to do this all together. The other thing I want to mention is we're revamping the committee work. So a lot of the things you're suggesting, there's going to, I'm working with Mr. Turner, on the committee flow process and how things will go into the proper committees to be vetted, worked on, so that way the initiatives, maybe it's mentioned here, but goes to the committee so they can get acted upon and put into place. So that's something we're going to be working on through workshops and different things. So that way we can streamline and work efficiently. Which you and I are both business people, we like to work efficiently. So that's just some commentary that I had. Do we have any other discussion on the allocations at this moment? Okay, being that there's no more, we're going to move forward with a vote. All in favor of the allocation formula that was presented in Agenda Item IXA, please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have four ayes and one nay. So the motion passes. We'll move to Agenda Item IX, Recommended New Business Item. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the Recommended Action New Business Item B. Revenue bond sale is...